Well, good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody tonight. Hello. There we go. That's the first time I've ever used that thing, I think. It's good to see you, everybody. Thanks for being here. What a full house, good-looking group of people. Thanks for joining us. Hope the Fire Marshal doesn't come in. It's good to have you all with us this evening, and I'm looking forward to a lot of really good recognitions, a lot of good business that we're working on tonight. And we will call the meeting for the Marble Falls Independent School District Board of Trustees for Monday, January 27th, 2025, to order at 6:01 PM. We've got all members of our board present. Thanks for being here, board. And to kick us off, I'd like to invite Pastor Harold Vanacek from St. Peter's Lutheran Church up to the podium here. Any words of wisdom? Kick us off with an invocation, and then we'll follow that with the pledges by Ms. McCary, vision statement by Mr. Boshiers, and then we'll jump into business.
Very good. First of all, I'd just like to thank Dr. Gasway and our school board for inviting me to offer an invocation for tonight. So I have a couple of things. One, I have a prayer, and then I have a blessing, especially for all of you in front of me. So our prayer. "Great teacher, coach, and creator. Join us in conversation and discernment and in giving gratitude this evening. Inspire our school board as they guide our school district in inspiring students and teachers. And thank you for all who have responded to the call to nurture the education of our children and families. Give them wisdom and courage to be bold and loving every child. And give our school board the words and gracious presence for when they talk with residents across our community, and as they lead us in a vision for a future of learning that spreads hope and compassion from the Highland Lakes to all the world." Amen. And a word of blessing for our school board. Came across this this week from somebody I really love reading, Diana Butler-Blas. She passed on this blessing that has spoken to me this week. And the blessing is this. "The world now is too dangerous and too beautiful for anything but love. So may your eyes be so blessed you see God in everyone; your ears so you hear the cry of the poor. May your hands be so blessed that everything you touch is a sacrament; your lips so you speak nothing but the truth with love. May your feet be so blessed you run to those who need you. And may your heart be so opened, so set on fire, that your love, your love, changes everything." Thank you.
If you'll join me for the pledge, and just a reminder, there is no comma under "one nation." It is "one nation" under God. It's one sentence, okay? Let's do it right, people. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible."
Thank you all, and thank you Pastor Vanacek for joining us and for also your work in all sorts of different ways, but most notably recently, the Community Advisory Committee for the Bond we'll be talking about later on. We appreciate your support all the way around. All right, let's see. Let's get into some of these special recognitions here. Superintendent's Award, Ms. Fletcher.
All right, we are here to recognize two amazing students. Can I have Sky Laird and Darian Cervantes Flores join us up front? And y'all can face the board and the audience that's here to join you. We're gonna start with Sky. It is an honor to let you know a little bit about Sky. Sky is a shining example with all of the positive ways she leads and exemplifies our 212-degree motto. She's attended Colt since pre-K, and we have gotten to witness her growing up firsthand. These are some things your teachers say. Mr. Cole says, "Sky has created an atmosphere of cooperation, kindness, and respect, not just in the classroom, but throughout the entire school community. Her influence has undoubtedly left a lasting impression." Coach Myers says, "Sky is so brave, respectful, compassionate, energetic, and motivated to be the best that she can be. She's a wonderful role model for her peers and is always striving to do the right thing with the utmost of integrity." Ms. Dalton says, "Her positivity is contagious, and her genuine curiosity about life inspires those around her to see the world through a lens of wonder and possibility." Ms. Slate says, "She's also one of the most resilient students I've had in my history of teaching. She is able to overcome challenges and put forth effort even when tasks and circumstances are difficult." And Nurse Heather says, "Sky walks the walk. She rises to the challenge. She's kind, she's caring, she does the right thing even though not always people are looking." And Ms. Greenberg says, "Sky is highly esteemed and highly esteemed student leader in the ACE program." But here's what your peers say. Calliope says, "You live 212 basically every day." Grace says, "I've learned from you how to care for people." Emma says, "You are above and beyond with how intelligent you are." Landry says, "You make school a better place by how respectful you are to your friends and teachers." Oriana says, "You try hard and help solve problems when things are happening between people." Olivia says, "I've learned from you how to be more patient." Kay says, "I greatly look up to you because you're an inspiring classmate that I hope to learn more from. I honestly couldn't think of a more deserving person." Jaden says, "I see you including people when no one else is." And Mila says, "I am not surprised that you got this award. They chose a great person that lifts people up when they are sad." And William says, "You deserve this award because you're amazing." But your family says. Aunt Lisa says, "She is a very loyal, kind-hearted person that tries her best. She loves to laugh and tease. She is one of the toughest kids I know. She takes life's challenges and runs with them. She can and will overcome obstacles in her path." Congratulations, Sky. So we have a book of letters from your peers and teachers, and a little award and a book from Miss Cream. Moving on to an equally amazing person, Darian. "Darian has the kindest heart, and he leads by example. He also exemplifies 212. He came to Colt last year from Marble Falls Elementary, and he's been a big blessing." Your teachers say. Ms. Whiteside says, "It's been a very rewarding experience to watch him work so hard and make so many gains. He is so considerate of others and works so very well in small groups." Coach Myers says, "Darian is always willing to help others, listens to others' opinions, and truly demonstrates being a reserved yet effective leader amongst his peers. He is so deserving of this award due to his integrity and the commitment he has to do the right thing." Ms. Tinker says, "Your kindness, integrity, and the way you treat others sets you apart." Ms. Dalton says, "His dedication to his goals is matched by his genuine care for others, creating a positive and inspiring presence wherever he goes. He is a shining example of what it means to lead with both heart and perseverance." And Ms. Revan says, "Your determination and effort do not go unnoticed. I truly wish you could see yourself the way I see you, full of potential, talent, and greatness." Your peers say. Ranger says, "You are so nice, friendly to your classmates and teachers. You are golden." Joseph says, "You are very good at soccer and always have good sportsmanship." Noah says, "At recess, you try to include everyone that wants to play." Noah says, "Your actions show you that you're a leader in every way." Alyssa says, "You are always putting forth extra effort and working so hard at school." Piper says, "You put others first, and people, and help people out." Gabby says, "You truly inspire the people around you to never let anything bring you down." Trip says, "You are always trying to make things better for everyone." RJ says, "You make people laugh, and you're one of the most honest people I know." Sky says, "You always let people play with you and are so thoughtful." And Dani says, "You go out of your way to help people." And your parents say, "Darian is a sweet and affectionate boy. He is very attentive and helps us in whatever ways he can at home. He is loved by all of us." Congratulations, Darian.
Very good. So let's see, before we move on from there, Sky's family and supporters, will you all stand up and give us a wave? And how about Darian's family and supporters? Stand up and give us a wave. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations, y'all. Thanks for the good work. Keep representing us well. Okay, 6B is Going the Extra Mile Award, Ms. Henson.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be honoring Ms. Lauren Myers with our Going the Extra Mile Award. Ms. Myers, will you join me at the podium, please? Ms. Myers is the PE teacher at Colt, and she joined Marble Falls in 2017, and this is her seventh year of teaching.
It's a true honor to be able to talk about Coach Lauren. Coach Myers is a phenomenal human being. We didn't know if she was gonna get here. I was like, where's she at? It was a surprise. We are beyond blessed to have Coach on campus. She elevates the school culture with every way that she leads. She amps up our practices and our processes. She believes in every single student. She lives 212 degrees with every fiber of her being. She's a PE coach to 100 littles, colleague to 100, bucket filler for countless adults and kids, creator of class captains, director of Slime Day, ruler of Field Day, Gaga, pit, and playground behavior plan creator and enforcer, spread the joy connoisseur, Hill Duty extraordinaire, connector lunch hero, DJ, and the list could go on and on. These are a few words from your colleagues. Inspiring, thoughtful, engaging, dedicated, asset, genuine, loving, honest, enthusiastic, impactful, creative, humble, blessing, relationships, connection, purposeful, intentional, supportive, unwavering, positive, welcoming, incredible, funny, passionate, and a unifier. 212. This is from your husband. "Lauren's commitment to her students and coworkers is steadfast and consistent each and every day. She shows up for them with energy and enthusiasm each day and truly loves her job. She's passionate about getting to know her students individually. She truly strives to make each student a better person, and she believes in them and the skills that they need to be successful in and out of the classroom." All that being said, here's some words from students. "Jaden said, 'You are one of the best teachers the school has ever had. You let us use our voices, and you are always kind to us no matter how loud or crazy we can be. I've never seen you call someone anything else besides their name, and you've only been here two years." And to know every single student's name is a big deal. But you've only been here two years, she said. That's pretty impressive. You're always welcoming in class, and sometimes when I'm walking by and I see you playing games with the littler kids, I'm just in awe. You're one of the first good mornings I hear when I'm walking inside. You teach us stuff in PE that most people don't get to do. I'm really..."
I'm really glad I have you as a teacher. And Graham said, Coach Myers has done so many great things for this school and it's hard to remember good things she's done because she's always doing something to help, work out problems, or even deal with tough situations. She's always smiling and being kind. PE is never boring with her as a coach. Coach Myers is a great person in and out of the school. We sure love our Coach Myers.
Congratulations, Coach Myers. While she makes her wave. I think Coach Myers has some family and supporters back there as well. Will you all stand up and give us a wave? Very good. Thank you so much. All right, Spotlight on Excellence, Dr. Gassaway.
Here we are. It is January Spotlight on Excellence and you have somebody in mind that you want to nominate. Tell me a little bit who you might be interested in.
Yes, sir. I felt that during this time of the year, one person came to mind. I see a lot of people amongst the district that do excellent work, but one person that came to mind was James Connor from the high school. He is one of the FFA advisor ag teachers and he's done a lot for the kids this year and a lot for the parents, to be honest with you. And I watch him day in and day out, the interactions that he has with our students down at the Ag Barn, whether it's the project that he's in charge of to helping other kids that have other projects that he's helping the other advisors with. One of the things he's done this year that really has been a tremendous help to the students and the parents is he went out and found a feed store that he's able to get lower prices for feed and supplements, which has been a huge benefit for parents' pocketbooks, which has allowed kids, obviously the extra funds to do some other things. On his weekends off, he actually travels to the feed store and he picks up that feed for the families so they're not having to traipse across the country to get feed. We found last year it was very difficult to get specific feeds in our area that the kids were needing, so he actually goes out, he picks up the feed after placing the order for the families, and he brings it back to the school on his days off. He unloads it and makes sure that the kids have what they need. And that's just, you know, it's hard to find. I get a lot of compliments from families from other schools that go to shows that we go to and actually commend how much we are blessed to have him because they struggle in areas that he actually fills those gaps.
Awesome. He is someone that we have, we've been getting just some positive affirmation as we look for Spotlight winners to really highlight and from driving the bus in the mornings and the afternoons, serving on committees to just try to make an impact on Marble Falls ISD to all the work that he's doing. Definitely somebody we want to spotlight as excellence. Thanks for nominating him.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Verdel. I'm an educational diagnostician for Marble Falls ISD, but more importantly, I'm the parent of two students, one at middle school and one at high school. This nomination is for Mr. James Connor. Mr. Connor is an FFA teacher and ag advisor at Marble Falls High School. Mr. Connor goes well above and beyond the Call of Duty Day and while I know there are many educators that do that as well, I feel like it's important for us to celebrate him. Mr. Connor starts his day in Florence, Texas, where he drives in, he goes to the barn, checks on all of the animals, doesn't get on a bus, drives a route, goes to school, works all day, and does the afternoon shift. Mr. Connor's not just there Monday through Friday. You'll find him at the barn on Saturday and Sunday too, helping students out with all kinds of things. We often joke that we're going to buy him an RV because he is there so much, he should just live there. Mr. Connor's pretty amazing, not just in that capacity, but also in many others too. From a very personal standpoint, this was a first-year ag project for my daughter, who is a sophomore at Marble Falls High School. She decided to do a goat project. While the goat project seemed like a great idea, we didn't realize when it came time to go to a jackpot show that we would need a goat hauler or a trailer and we don't own those. Mr. Connor heard about our predicament and he said, I'll meet you at the barn Sunday morning, 6:00 AM, be ready. He met us at the barn, helped us load our goats. We went to a jackpot show. He remained there all day long and then hauled the goats back to the barn. That's a Sunday. That's not his workday. That's Mr. Connor going above and beyond. And it's not just our story, there are many others that have stories just like that. So this celebration is for Mr. Connor. I hope that you feel the love for Marble Falls. You inspire all of us and we hope you stay here forever. Thank you for all you do for our students and of course, parents too. Congratulations.
Here we are. It is January and we are talking about Spotlight on Excellence and I will tell you that throughout this year, your name has come up over and over again, whether it's driving a bus early in the morning, late at night, the hours you put in, the committees you serve in, the commitment to our kids, Going the Extra Mile, your work with our ag kids, and just going above and beyond in so many different ways. How do you have the energy to do it and why do you do it?
Well, I'll tell you, if it wasn't for the parents or the admin, it'd be a lot tougher than what it is. So with us having the parent backing and good administrators like our CTE director, Ms. Bernard, and our principal, Mr. Henson, makes it so much easier on us with our paperwork. But honestly, it's for the parents too. They're always there to help back us up and give us any type of support we need. We got a lot of our parents are on our ag alumni and having them there to just kind of push us forward, it helps immensely.
I want you to know, it was, the nominations were all over the place from transportation, driving the buses, your work in ag, your just commitment to our kids and our district. And so I just want to say congratulations. Thanks for being our Spotlight on Excellence Award winner this month.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Y'all, I will tell you, in all seriousness, we've been getting just great stories of Mr. Connor and we've been just knowing at some point we were going to get to pull the trigger and this was a fun month. And so thank you for all you do to level on our kids from early in the morning, checking on the animals, to driving our buses, to Going the Extra Mile. And I will tell you, we have some people, I'll let you, he's got some supporters in the audience that he needs to see.
Supporters? Let us hear it.
A small something from us to you and then something to hang on your refrigerator at home. And let me get my picture with you, if you don't mind.
Congratulations, Mr. Connors. Anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Nominant, if I might. I think that just shows how humble Mr. Connor is in all this. We've heard from my wife, from Sergeant Boucher, but it's the amount of time and effort that he's put into all those kids up there and driving a bus, the FFA and all the ag kids and everybody in between, the amount of students lies that he's touching in our district is amazing. And so thank you, Mr. Connor, for all the work you're doing for us.
Well deserved. Very good. Spotlight on Engagement, Ms. Lefley.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to recognize for Spotlight on Engagement, an experienced exceptional teacher whose students are showing incredible growth. Her students were in the top three elementary classrooms district-wide who showed the most growth the last round we had some assessments. Her classroom is one of the most engaging classrooms in the district and people want to come and see what's happening in there to learn from her. She has served in our district in multiple capacities. The most recent, she serves as a fifth grade teacher at Highland Lakes Elementary. Please welcome the January Spotlight on Engagement, Nancy Estrada. When you walk in her room, you enter into a world in which you are captivated by what will be learned. You want to be a student again and you become one, you get sucked in and then you forget you were there to just observe or to stick around for a couple minutes, you're there 20, 30 minutes. As stated by her principal, Nancy is an exceptional educator who goes above and beyond to ensure her students' success. Her engaging, well-aligned lessons incorporate best practices in bilingual instruction, making learning accessible and meaningful for all students. She is a master of sheltered instruction techniques. She has trained our teachers over the years and her in the classroom right now, her kids are growing more than almost anyone else. It's amazing to see. Her belief in her student abilities inspire them to achieve goals they didn't even know were possible. Beyond the classroom, Nancy's initiative to start before and after-school programs demonstrates her unwavering commitment to student growth. She's also a collaborative team player and serves as an outstanding mentor for new bilingual teachers, ensuring they feel supported and successful in their roles. Nancy's ability to create a positive collaborative classroom culture and her dedication to excellence makes her a true asset to Highland Lakes Elementary. Nancy, thank you for being a role model for students and staff by showing everyone what can happen in a vibrant, engaging classroom where every student feels empowered to reach their full potential and show growth. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Estrada. Would you like to share anything with us? We're glad you're part of it. Ms. Estrada's family, friends, stand up, give a holler, give a wave. Very good. Okay, that gets us to Item E, as Texas Music Educators Association Invited Choir 2025, Mr. Gage.
So we would like to, I'd like to recognize this group of corral members. There's 52 members here tonight. There's a process called the Texas Music Educators Association Invited Choir Process. It is a very competitive process in the state of Texas where you submit recordings and they are gone through three rounds of blind auditions. It's through all classes, so there's not a, there's not a division for 4A, there's not a division for 5A, it's everybody for yourself. And you're all competing against each other in those three rounds. In the last 10 years, they select eight choirs a year to represent TMEA and across the state at our convention in February. In the last 10 years, three schools have not been 5A or 6A. And so it is very difficult for that process. You're looking at the third-place choir. We're the number-one choir in 4A and we're the number-one choir in 5A because there were only two 6As ahead of us in this competition. The hard part of this process is the, you have to submit multiple years of recordings because they're not looking for people that have one-hit wonders, they want to see the consistency in programs. And Dr. Gassaway has been encouraging me to be a part of this process as long as he's been in the district. And it's a journey. It's been a lot, but we won this award or was invited back in May and then you have to produce with a choir that you haven't seen yet. So you have to put together a full concert. So we perform February 13th at 7:00 PM in San Antonio at the Convention Center in front of thousands of choir directors. So it's a little unnerving because they're going to be judging us because they didn't get picked. It's okay. Some will love us, some will hate us, and some will be like, meh, but we don't care. We found joy in our journey getting here. These kids have worked tons, tons of hours to get to this place. We have two preview concerts, which is like our quarterfinals and our semifinals coming up. We have one in Austin on February 6th and we have one here at the high school on February 10th. And then we travel to San Antonio to represent Marble Falls. And so we want to thank you for being supportive, Dr. Gassaway, and the board for being supportive in this adventure because it was never about the concert that's coming up and it was always about the growth. And these kids are amazing humans that are incredible singers and incredible musicians. So thank you very much.
Will you take that microphone and just quickly like introduce yourself, what grade you're in? I know there's a lot of you, but we want to know who you are. You can sing also if you are.
I think I'm good. My name is Kaden Greenberg. I'm a senior.
My name is Christian Morales. I'm a junior.
My name is Garen Jones and I'm a senior.
My name's Harley Blair and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Reese Corsi and I'm a junior.
I'm Ella Bray. I'm a senior.
I'm Elsa Van Fort. I'm a junior.
I'm Taylor DeLis and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Addison Craig and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Peyton Thomas and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Raylee Crim and I'm a junior.
My name is Madison Harris and I'm a senior.
I'm Sujin Pope and I'm a senior.
I'm Jane Jane and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Kristen Plumlee and I'm a senior.
I'm Sophia Vajini and I'm a senior.
I'm Jade Maynard and I'm a senior.
I'm Humana Mesa and I'm a senior.
I'm Emily Berry and I'm a junior.
I'm Evelyn Cortez and I'm a senior.
I'm Jaylee Sogabell and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Amy Banda and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Keely Holsturness and I'm a junior.
I'm Addison Doherty and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Anna Lee Flores and I'm a senior.
I'm Branson Bunting and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Madison Copeland and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Haley Flores and I'm a senior.
I'm Addie Muma. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Brooke Nastesta. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Nina Garcia and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ines Riz and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Hudson Brantley and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Faith Clausen and I'm a senior.
My name is Titus Willie and I'm a senior.
I'm Jaden Barcourt and I'm a senior.
I'm Matthew Zun and I'm a senior.
I'm Cameron Newell and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Anthony Griffin and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Hunter Holder. I'm a junior.
I'm Luis Falcon. I'm a senior.
I'm Rafael Garcia. I'm a junior.
I'm Rodford Solar. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Dash Rowland Sims and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Noe Gonzalez. I'm a junior.
I'm Jenny Lynn Gage. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Lindsay Nyer. I'm a senior.
I'm Milena Rojas and I'm a senior.
I'm Ashton Johnston. I'm a junior.
Awesome. Very good. Thank y'all for being here. Congratulations.
And then I have the next group. So, can I just say?
Well, before, maybe just, audience members, if your family, friends, support, stand up, give us a holler. Very good. Congratulations.
If the All-Staters will stay.
Okay, so, next one is, let's see, TMEA, small school, all-state mixed choir, Mr. Gage.
I explained this process to y'all last year, but it is a competitive process where students go head-to-head against each other in a small-school setting, four A and below, and there are a total of a hundred and twelve spots in the state of Texas for that. In our area, there are sixteen spots in which they can go. Our area goes from around the College Station area all the way up to, grabs a little bit of Dallas, all the way up to Wichita Falls, so it's a very large area with a lot of schools. And we had six All-Staters this year and two first alternates. The first alternates were within hundreds of points of being, having those spots, but out of the sixteen spots, we, we're taking six of those this year. There's only one school in small school in the state of Texas that has more All-Staters in that choir than us. That's Canyon Texas, who's a good friend of ours, and we all know him, and, but he has, he has ten. So, we have a goal now, and so, we're not going to let that happen again. We actually had twenty-nine make the region choir, twenty-seven make the pre-area round as they compete, and then twelve at area. And out of those twelve, these six are your All-Staters. We have Ines Ruiz is a first-year All-Stater alto, and then we have Jaylee Sagabill as a first-year soprano All-Stater, and then we have Hudson Brantley as a base sophomore, two-year All-Stater now. We have Ella Bray, who was a two-year All-Stater and first chair all the way. And then we have Jade Maynard, who was a two-year All-Stater and first chair all the way. And then we have Hunter Holder, who is a two-year All-Stater and a first chair. And so, these kids represented us well. They'll be in San Antonio with us for the TMEA process, but they have a whole nother ballgame that they're doing where they'll be part of a concert on Saturday with a hundred and twelve of the best singers in the state. So, thank y'all very much for supporting us in this process.
Family, friends, all-state choir people, stand up and give us a holler, wave. Congratulations, y'all. Keep up the good work. Awesome. Very good. Go ahead, Juan.
Sorry. This is Clark Sandley. I'm terrible at this. Clark is my partner in crime, and so, he, he leads the All-Staters. He led the all-state program this year and took over that and is the big responsibility. All of that goes to him, the credits and everything for that. He's a great addition to the district. We stole him from Liberty Hill, and we're not giving him back.
Very good. Congratulations, Clark. All right, Marble Falls High School College Board Awards, Mr. Henson.
Good evening. Is James Connor still here? He probably already went back to the barn. I hope you noticed that. I want to say a quick thing about him real quick. What did he do? The first thing he did was deflect to other people, and, and that, but that's who James is, is he's just an amazing, amazing man and educator, but the first thing he did was give Bernard and me and parents credit. He never likes to take the credit, but he deserves every bit that he gets, and so, that was awesome to see that. You also got to see some of our amazing choir. I'm just blessed to be able to be their principal and get to hear them. Pretty much any time I want, I just walk down the hallway and find my way to the choir room and get to listen to them, and they're amazing. And so, I do encourage you and everybody in the audience to come out on February tenth and see that, that concert there at the auditorium. I promise, I promise you will not be disappointed. So, I now have the opportunity to recognize some of our seniors, and so, y'all come on up, if y'all know, if y'all are here. I'm gonna call your names here in just a second. October of their junior year, okay? So, I want to set this in place so you can understand the process. We have all of our juniors take what's called the PSAT-NMSQT, a lot of letters there, but it's the Pre-SAT Test and the National Merit School Qualifying Test is what those letters stand for. And mind you, they took that their junior year, October of their junior year, so the fall of their junior year. It takes a full year for the College Board to kind of filter through all those and finish out with National Merit and semifinalists, and then all these different awards. And we just found out about two weeks ago that nineteen of our finest of our senior class won thirty-three different awards from that process. And so, kudos to these young men and women to not only be amazing representatives for Marble Falls High School, Marble Falls ISD, and then just Marble Falls in general, but to also give their best effort, because sometimes our students are like, what are we taking another test for? And we try to really push that junior test, because it does make a difference, and you do have an opportunity to be recognized for that. And so, this is who we have. And so, I'm gonna call your name. There's four different distinctions that they could have gotten, and basically, this means you're in the top echelon of each. And so, rural is one of those, Hispanic is another, African-American is another, and then first-generation. And, and so, inside of each of those, depending on how they filled out their stuff, they fall into one of those categories. And so, these are some of the top-ranked kids in the nation, not just the state of Texas. That's the thing about this College Board thing, is it's, it's a national deal, and so, we found out, and then I've called them in and let them know they needed to be here. And so, first up, and y'all just kind of wave wherever you're at. I'm not sure which order you're in. Sophia Viegini, she, she won the rural award. Ella Bray won the rural award. Alexis Fregoso won first-generation and Hispanic. Brian Garcia won first-generation Hispanic and rural. Lucy Griffin won rural. Jordan Guzman won first-generation Hispanic and rural. Tyler Hamblin won Hispanic. Elena Ismailov won rural. Deston Johnson won first-generation rural. Lindsay Nyer won first-generation rural. Isaiah Lozos won African-American and Hispanic. Ryan Nolan, first-generation and rural. Lilian Parker won Hispanic. Yahir Perez won first-generation Hispanic and rural. Sophie Reyna won Hispanic and rural. Timothy Rios, Hispanic and rural. Elliot Rossbach, rural. Kathy Silva, first-generation Hispanic, and then Henry Vanacek, one rural. So, once again, nineteen students won thirty-three different awards from the National College Board recognition. And so, wanted to make sure they got a little face time with y'all, and y'all get to see some of the finest students that we have from our senior class, again, based on a test that they took early in their junior year. And so, we look forward to the things that they accomplish, and they'll continue to represent us well. And so, this is our award winners.
Congratulations, y'all. Thanks for representing us well. Family, friends, supporters, will y'all stand up and give us a wave? Very good. Congratulations, y'all. Thanks for, thanks for keep representing us really well. All right, Dr. Gasaway, School Board Appreciation, quickly.
So, the month of January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we are blessed to have a great school board. Just as a reminder to those of y'all who are in the audience, if you didn't know this, the school board is an unpaid position. You get voted into three-year terms, and you are serving your time to just, with the vision of our district as, as a driving force. And so, I'm gonna turn it over. I think Susie is gonna say a few words on behalf of our campus principals. This year's theme is Leadership for Tomorrow's Texas, and so, with that, Ms. Susie.
Yeah, good night, good evening. I just want to say thank you to our, our board members. Y'all are amazing. Tonight, we come together as a leadership, as a leadership team to recognize you, and I think the biggest thing that comes to mind when we, when we see you and we think of you, and we meet with you, and we talk with you, is that you truly stick to our vision, and you stick to the unyielding commitment to love every single child and inspire them to achieve their fullest potential. It's done with every action. It's done with every decision you make, whether it's supporting a teacher with the tools or the resources, or whether it's supporting our students with love and support. You are always there, and so, we just want to say thank you. We wanted to think of something that was a little bit symbolic of all of your work, so we got a little creative. And just like our stadium seats bring us all together at our games to cheer us on, your leadership brings us all together, whether it's our school, our families, our students, and you really do go the extra mile to bring us all together. So, tonight, we wanted to say thank you on behalf of us for all your dedication and sticking to our vision every single day. So, thank you very much.
There is also a bag at the dais that each one of you received from Marble Falls ISD. Just one more small, little something that hopefully you can wear at SLI this summer. There's two of them, so we should have three days' worth of good gear. So, there we go.
Very good. Thank you all, and thank you for serving the way you do, so it makes this job easy. Okay, so, we've got, let's see, this, coach is always on me for a break. Let's take a five-minute recess, break. We'll come back and get into business and let, if this would be a good time, if you're not interested in sticking around, step out, and, and we'll carry on the board meeting in five minutes. It's six forty-eight. Let's see, so, we're at citizen comments, but all the citizen, I do have some citizen comments, but they're all regarding bond issue, and so, if it's okay with you all, if anybody objects, just let me know, and we can do it now. But I was gonna maybe wait until we get to that discussion point and then have citizen comments at that time, if that's okay with those of you who've signed up. Anybody opposed to that idea? Okay. All right, so, information items, general fund summary, expenditure report, quarterly investment reports, special awareness dates. Dr. Gasaway, anything to add to any of those?
We've got one special awareness date, and that is January sixth is Sam Rayburn Day in memory of the great Texan and American statesman, Sam Rayburn. January sixth, Sam Rayburn Day.
Very good. God bless Texas.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're gonna come back around to public hearing also, so that the mayor can get on with his life. We're gonna get to presentation, discussion items, possible action, city of Marble Falls wastewater treatment plant project, Mayor Rhodes and crew.
Thank you so much. I kind of thought this was my life. And just for the record, my name is Dave Rhodes, and I'm a senior. Couldn't wait to, couldn't wait to say. They had to have Segway somewhere, right? Now, thank you for giving us a little bit of moment. Usually, it's the other way around. Dr. Gasaway's coming and presenting to the city council, and we really appreciate it and get an understanding of what we're doing. City of Marble Falls is engaging in probably what would be the largest municipal project we may ever do. And I think you'll see that here, but it affects everybody in the community, and we're here to engage stakeholders. We consider y'all to be very important stakeholders and community members, as well as an information base. And the more you understand, and the more other folks understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, we think the better. We call it One Water. We've had stakeholder meetings over, over several years and unsolicited. One of the, do you mind if I pull this out of here? I go back and forth. One of the most consistent things we hear is water. What about water? We all know we're growing, and so, we get the question, what about water? And our One Water Plan addresses a lot of that. The population impacts right now, Marble Falls, on the current trends, is growing about three times the state average. I think you guys kind of see that as well. Droughts, impacts of droughts, those things we can't control, but yet they happen nonetheless. I like to joke and say when I, before I moved here, I researched how much it rained in Marble Falls, and I was like, this is pretty cool. It rains more twice as much as where I was coming from, and, but I didn't, they didn't tell me that it only does that once a year, and you get it all at once, which is really challenging. Infrastructure impacts. Marble Falls has an older part of town, and we're growing a new part of town. None of the infrastructure was put in place in the older part of town to accept the growth, but the wastewater plant, really what we want to focus here is, was built in nineteen fifty-three and nineteen fifty-four. And it's down there by the park. A lot of people don't even know where it is. If you're in Johnson Park and you look around towards Huber, if you really don't know what you're looking at, it's there, but we're kind of tired of band-aiding it, duct-taping it, baling wire, putting it together and keeping it running. This is an interesting statistic, and this is kind of the basis of One Water and the thinking behind it. If you look at the solid line there, that is, it was the dry line, considered the dry line. Things of the west of the dry line had far, or significantly less rain than east of the dry line. Well, if you look at the dotted line, over the last twenty- Well, if you look at the dotted line, over the last 20 years or so, that's where the dry line is now. That puts Marble Falls west of the dry line. And it's no secret, again, we get our, all of our rain all at once typically, but we're getting less and less, but the growth is not stopping. It's still coming. One of the things we look at as a city is our current infrastructure and our current water sources, and we take trends, I know you guys track trends as well, from a strictly water standpoint, if we were not to change anything, our existing supply base, or the growth trends, we would be stopping, we're not gonna be out of water, but we can't have any more water to produce by 2045. It may sound like a long way away, from a city and a large infrastructure standpoint, that's not. We need to look 10, 20, and 25 years out, or more. So what is the One Water Plan? The One Water Plan maximizes surface and groundwater. A lot of people, if you paid close attention to the papers, a couple of years ago, Marble Falls purchased a very large ground, or, yeah, groundwater source south of the river. That's a substantial addition to our system, we're in the process of engineering that into the system currently. Encourage waters conservation. This is something we're gonna get heavier, and I'm not a punitive guy, I don't like punitive measures, LCR seems to like that stuff, but we need to talk water conservation. And School District is one of our largest to water consumers, mostly from ball fields. And if you look at the water usage that we produce at the water plant currently, about two-thirds of all the water we produce goes to irrigation all by itself. And so, conservation is a big piece of that puzzle. Recycle water irrigation, we call that Purple Pipe. We are, we have grants in part of this program that we're pushing now to continue and to expand the Purple Pipe system, so you guys will be beneficiaries of some of that too. I knew that was coming. Advance purification and reuse. The rest of this presentation will focus a lot on that, and what it can do, and why it can do it, and how beneficial it is. But at the end of the day, in numbers, if we implement the reuse system that we are implementing and putting together here, it will save approximately 306 billion gallons of water a year, that we're not gonna pull out of the lake, that we can use to grow. So, it's important to understand, Phase 1, that that 1953, 1954 plant, not only is it old, but it's outdated and it's out of capacity. So, almost five years now, we've been in the process of engineering, behind Walmart, basically, is we're gonna put a 3 million gallon a day plant. That's twice the capacity that we have currently in new plants. We're also gonna expand the Purple Pipe water system in parallel to that, so that will expand geographically in other areas. We're gonna up the capacity, and the future phase behind that is the water purification system. So Phase 1 is the plant and the Purple Pipe. Phase 2 is the advanced purification plant. That's a fancy way of saying, we're gonna take, and we're gonna recycle wastewater. We can recycle approximately 70% of the input that we currently put in. Most people don't realize, we process currently today over 1.2 million gallons a day just through the wastewater plant. If we can, and, all that water is wasted at the backside of the plant. Most of it's put on hayfields, and it's gone, we can't get it. This operation allows us to reclaim 70% of that water, that's where we get 306 billion gallons. By the time this plant is built, which is probably 24 to 36 months, we are gonna stick a shovel in the ground in March, you should see that somewhere around that window of time, and it'll take a couple, two, three years to do that, we will already be pretty close to reaching the 1.5 million gallon a day capacity of our current wastewater plant. So, we're starting this none too soon. It's a long process. Phase 2 of that is the advanced purification system, and that's really important for us to understand and educate what that is. If you've ever been in the Navy, I've talked to a Navy guy this morning, he said, "Yeah, I've been aircraft carrier," this system is not new. The technology continues to advance. It's challenging only from a, we're not used to it standpoint. If you've been on a cruise ship, and it's done all over the world, in places that are really drought. So, sustainable solutions is what One Water is about. You saw the 2045 on there, again, that's, that seems like a long way away, but it's not. And so, projects like this allow us to extend that decades and decades. One of the things I think is really exciting about this has become a passion for me. I'm gonna pass this around real fast. This is kind of a visual. Purple Pipe, there's a label on here, just turn it around, so if you look at this in the light, Purple Pipe Water is where you start in the purification process. The other one is Lake Water. And if you look at those in the light, most people say, the Lake Water, you can tell, it is, has a lot more stuff in it than the Purple Pipe Water, just from a starting standpoint. So you start with Purple Pipe Water, which is really, we currently put it on the parks and many other places in the city. And for all intent and purposes, Purple Pipe Water is drinking water that's not been chlorinated. That's an overgeneralization, I get, but that's pretty close to what it is. Sustainability is the key here. Most cities rely either on groundwater or surface water, or a combination of those things, and nobody gets to own it. We've asked and asked and asked about the aquifers, Edwards and otherwise, no one really knows how big they are. Where they start, where they end, how deep they are, how much water's in them, no one knows. So, taking control of the situation. I like this slide, not only is it a good visual, but if you see where it says, "LCRA limits." So the water that we currently take, currently is controlled by LCR. Not that they're bad folks, but they can turn that spigot off anytime they want. And that is challenging, and we're trying to take control of that. I won't go into a lot of this technology, I told you that this is not a new technology. There's a tremendous treatment operation in the purification process to get it to become drinking water. Technology allows us not only to understand what's in the wastewater, even before it hits the plant, but when it comes out the back of the plant, more importantly. So if it doesn't meet standard regardless of the reason, and there's even a technology that says, "This batch may have something in it," because it's, you learn more about wastewater than you wanna know. I don't wanna be here and talk too much about that, but it's amusing at some level, right? We can get rid of it immediately. So the safety measures are all there, and it's exciting to see it and the advancement of this, because this technology's continued all over the world. Why is this important to Marble Falls? This is an 86, almost 87 million dollar project. Again, I told you upfront, this is probably the biggest project maybe Marble Falls may ever do, and this is, but it's very important to the city, and it's important to our community as well. But what's exciting about this, and I'll give a lot of kudos to our staff, engineers, and others, we have currently about $85 million in state and federal grants and low interest and zero-interest loans already. Texas Water Development Board and the State of Texas, all the way to the governor's office, extremely important, are excited about this, and see it as an important pilot project for the state, which, I'm excited about that. They wanna know, we're close enough, and we're far enough, and we're big enough, and they're helping us fund it, and those, the dollar amounts show that. What's important to note, too, if we had time for a lot of questions, I get this, what about water rates, the cost, we saw this coming and recognized, and I hate paying for soft costs out of, with bonds, engineering and all those other kinda things. So the rates for these have been built into current city water rates for over two years. We've seen it coming, we've built them in, we phased it in, so it's not gonna be a big surprise, all of a sudden, boom, whap, and. So that's my presentation, I'd certainly take any questions. It's important for us to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, but if we don't do something, we'll all be in a, have a different conversation in the future.
Questions, comments, board?
Sir.
Mayor, thank you for coming, that was very informative. One quick question, you talked about conservation, is the city gonna consider, like some other cities do, any type of incentives for homeowners or businesses, or maybe even the School District for like, zero-scaping their property?
Everybody but the School District, yes, absolutely. Yeah, there are grants out, the LCR has grant, I didn't even know this till we got started, LCR offers grants for water conservation, all the way up and all the way through, and yes, we have a little panel we're working, mostly through the Parks Department at the moment, that's bringing some, what we can do to incentivize those things. Thank you very much, appreciate your time. Did anybody drink the water? There we go. Glad nobody drank the water.
Thank you. Thanks, Aaron, for being here as well. Okay, let's get to, we'll skip, well, go ahead, Stan, you're on your way up, let's get, it'll be quick. Inclimate weather resolution, let's go.
Good evening, board. In front of you is a resolution for your consideration. Last Tuesday, January 21st, we had inclement weather, some snow and ice that created some hazardous driving conditions, and so, we did have school closure on Tuesday, and according to our local policy, DEA Local requires us to have a resolution if we are not going to make up that day missed, so that we can compensate all of our employees, our exempt employees, not exempt, salaried. We have 703 total employees. For your consideration on this resolution. We also, several years back, I believe in 2022, we looked at DEA Local, and those of our staff that come into work on the day of closure, our maintenance staff, some custodians that are taking care of our facilities and making sure that it's safe for the next day, those employees that come into work on those days get paid time and a half for those. And so that's already in place, covered through DEA Local. This is just covering compensation for all Marble Falls ISD employees to not make that day up, that was missed. And so, at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
All employees, cafeteria, workers?
Yes, sir. All 703.
Okay.
For one day missed.
Questions, comments, motions?
I move to adjourn the inclement weather resolution.
Motion by Mr. Boshiers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Verdel, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll circle back around to citizen comments based on our.
You mean Duncan Fields' TAPR report?
Before? We'll go, we'll do, yeah, I'll come back around to TAPR report in just a little bit, let's get into this bond stuff, so that everybody else might be able to get back to their life as well. Okay, so Marble Falls ISD order calling for the school bond election, but then we'll kinda pause that one and get back to citizen comments here real fast, just so those of you who have asked to speak know, we usually, we don't usually, we keep these to three minutes, and so I'll time them, when you get to about a minute, I'll give you a little signal, but try to keep it pretty, pretty close into that three-minute time, and then this will allow us to also then go right into Dr. Gasway's presentation for the bond election, and then we'll be able to have some dialogue as the board afterwards. So, just the first one that landed up here is Ms. Landstrom, Laura Landstrom?
Do I just start? Okay, all right. Good evening, members of Marble Falls ISD School Board. My name is Laura Landstrom, and I'm the mother of a first-grade student at Spice Wood Elementary, a pre-K3 student at Spice Wood Elementary, and a two-year-old future student at Spice Wood Elementary. And I first want to give a heartfelt thank you to each of you for your dedication to our public schools. I'm proud to send my kids to public schools, I'm a product of all public schools, and I've spent 15 years working all in Title I public schools in Austin ISD, Athens, Georgia, Washington DC, as an elementary teacher and as an assistant principal. And my heart really is Title I public schools, and y'all are all doing the Lord's work, so thank you. But I'm here today to urge you to include the construction of a new wing for Spice Wood Elementary in the upcoming bond package, and to prioritize its construction with groundbreaking beginning in the fall of 2025. This wing is what is equitable. As I mentioned, I worked in Title I schools in various parts of the country. All the schools I worked at had pre-K3 and pre-K4 classrooms with restrooms attached. So imagine my surprise when I arrived at the pre-K Kinder Roundup with my three-year-old, to find out she needs to be escorted down the hall to a restroom that's shared with older students. I'm a proud native Texan, and I know we want our early childhood classrooms to follow best classroom practices like other classrooms across our nation. I was also told by a parent that the other three elementary schools in our district have pre-K restrooms inside their classrooms. So it's the board's job to ensure there's equity across the district. Safety issues aside, it is inequitable to students in my daughter's pre-K classroom that instructional aides have to use valuable classroom time, time that should be primarily devoted to educational and emotional learning, to escort students to the restroom. As a Title I campus, Spice Wood serves a diverse population of students, many of whom come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Now I know the school board is aware of the plethora of studies showing how our economically disadvantaged students are some of the most academically at risk, and how crowded academic environments compound this risk. But it's not a question of if Spice Wood is growing, it is growing, and if it keeps growing at its current pace, we'll have outgrown the building by 2027. There were 251 students at Spice Wood when my oldest entered kindergarten last year. Last I checked, there were 321 students currently enrolled. That's 70 more students in just a little over a year. They had to hire an additional first-grade teacher at the beginning of the school year to fit the influx of students. They had to hire a additional pre-K4 teacher to fit the influx of students. Last year, the three-year-old room had 13 children in it, there's 20 in my three-year-old's class. So I've worked in schools that didn't get ahead of student growth, and I've seen firsthand the great challenges it can bring to students and staff. Therefore, I urge you to prioritize the construction of this new wing in the fall of 2025. I understand this is a significant financial undertaking, however, I believe that investing in our children is the most important investment we can make. By investing in this new wing, we're not just building classrooms, we're building a brighter future, not only for all the current students at Spice Wood, but for the growing needs of our community for all the years to come. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, this makes, Ms. Maxi, sorry, my microphone wasn't on, just wanted to get that in the record.
First, I want to express my gratitude to the board for the hours of dedication you put into serving our community. I'm Christine Maxi, a former educator and Marble Falls ISD parent. After my husband's time in the Army, we long to make it back to central Texas to raise our children. We sought out MFISD because of the faith and values embodied by this board. I read every single one of your bios online, and that's what sealed the deal before we moved here. As a member of the Community Action Committee this fall, I was further impressed by the board's incredible fiscal responsibility. The Community Action Committee stakeholders from across all campuses and the community at the last meeting voted on every bond item to ensure the package proposed represented community support. Tonight, I ask you to follow the will of the committee and vote to place all the proposed bond projects on the May 2025 ballot, especially the much-needed wing for Spice Wood. Bonds do not raise property taxes, waiting until November will raise a total price of millions of dollars for the exact same projects. The Spice Wood wing had a near unanimous support, with 39 people voting yes and only one dissenting on the committee. Spice Wood has been steadily growing, adding 50 new students a year for the past two years, with no signs of slowing down. As you can see by the enrollment numbers, the secret is out, people are moving here because this is an excellent place to raise children. This fall, I saw lots of young children when I went door-to-door in Thunder Rock promoting the Vader. Spice Wood covers the largest geographic area, has the most amount of homes and apartments being built, yet it can only accommodate 450 students, at best if grades are distributed evenly. A new wing will take two years to complete, if we are lucky, it will be done right before maxing out capacity. Spice Wood is a Title I school like all of Marble Falls ISD, and an overcrowded campus will have a deep negative impact on all students, but especially our disadvantaged students. As a former high school teacher, I can tell you, the earlier students fall behind, the wider their gaps will get unless there are drastic interventions. My daughter had 30 children in her kindergarten class before we came here. She was wildly behind despite excellent curriculum, and it took four extra days of homework every single week in first grade for her to catch up. My youngest enters kindergarten this fall, and I now fear that she and other children will face hardships if this new wing is not built. The campus will be bursting when she enters second grade if there is no new wing. Our children have one shot at elementary school, their foundation. The decision you make tonight will have a profound impact on their future. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
With time to spare. Good job, thank you. Ms. Williams?
Hello. So I'm a parent, and last year was our first year in the Marble Falls District. So first, I just want to say how impressed I am by everybody's community involvement. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces out here because of just overlapping interests. So thank you for all you do. Several months ago, I was asked to be part of the Community Advisory Committee for the upcoming bond. The topic of the Spice Wood expansion was, of course, discussed at the meetings, and as Christine said, it was supported by nearly everyone in attendance. It was ranked as a high priority need of the district by everybody that was there. You know, we saw the real enrollment numbers that steadily grew, the, you know, growth in the communities, and the increasing building costs, and it just made pretty clear sense to everybody there that it was a smart thing to do with this upcoming bond. And we talked a lot about how we wanted to make sure we didn't fall behind of the growth because of how detrimental that could be to the students, as Christine talked about. So anyway, I'm hearing rumors that the $13 million proposed is still in the package, but it might just be earmarked more generically, so that we can just see if the growth happens. So, you know, I totally understand, we don't want to build anything too early, and we don't want to have an empty classroom. I know that was kind of the reputation of Spice Wood in the past, anyway. But I think it's important that you know that we all left that community meeting with not only viewing this expansion as a need, but there was also a really high sense of urgency there for this particular project, you know, as opposed to all the other projects. Like this one, we thought needed to be started pretty quickly. So, you know, if those rumors are true, it just seems like there's a disconnect in the information being shared at our meetings versus maybe what's being discussed with the board. So, you know, I just felt compelled to bring that up, because I'm concerned that if we waited, it might put us in a situation where we don't have adequate space. So when I heard there seems to be sort of a wait-and-see-if-the-growth-happens approach, I just wanted to, you know, say something. So if there is a clear plan in place from the board's perspective regarding the right time to build, I just think it would be really helpful if that was communicated to the people that took the time to discuss this in the community. So for example, at what point should we start the construction if the bond passes? I feel like the enrollment trends are there, but maybe there's different information that y'all are looking at. And just making sure we're talking about how do we make sure we don't get behind, how we make sure the costs stay reasonably in line with the $13 million if we're seeing all the building costs increasing nationwide. What's the plan for 2027? If the growth does happen, are we okay with having waivers for larger classrooms and portables? I presume the answer is no, but again, there just seems to be a disconnect in the information reviewed. So I just wanted to voice that importance of reviewing all of the data and building timelines, so that we have a set plan in place. And so that's all I have. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bertino?
Just a little short. Good evening, School Board members. My name is Miki Bertino, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Spice Wood Elementary. I'm here tonight to discuss the upcoming proposed bond. When this conversation began, there was talk about building an additional wing for pre-K at Spice Wood. However, the idea was later questioned due to concerns about growth. But the reality is, we are growing. New neighborhoods like Thunder Rock, Greg Ranch, Spice Wood Trails, Reese Landing Estates are being developed currently. Thomas Ranch has already started the infrastructure of the 2,200-acre master planned community. Additionally, two apartment complexes are nearly at completion. My classroom numbers have increased significantly since I started at Spice Wood Elementary 10 years ago. When I taught pre-K, my class size was as small as nine students in one year. This student, this year, we've had to add additional pre-K, first grade, and fourth grade classrooms due to the growth. This year, our pre-K3 class grew from 13 to 20 students, a significant increase that clearly shows the rising demand for early childhood education in Spice Wood. Moreover, the number of pre-K students is a key indicator of what we can expect in terms of future kindergarten enrollment. The growth in our pre-K4 classes directly translate to an increased need for space and resources in the coming years. By addressing these needs now, we can ensure that we are fully prepared for the influx of students, rather than scrambling to find solutions when it's already too late. The time to plan for this growth is now, so we can continue to provide a high-quality educational experience for all of our students. This is not because of the new zoning lines, it is directly the result of the development in our area. We need to prepare for continuing growth, and since bonds are not proposed every single year, we need to plan for the next few years to come. After the proposal for the new wing was questioned, an alternative to add bathrooms to classrooms was suggested. While I understand that intent, I believe funds would be better spent on dedicated pre-K wing, which addresses both current and future needs. Kindergarten students are already used to independently going to the restrooms with no issues, and adding bathrooms to the classroom would reduce valuable space needed for hands-on learning. My students do not just sit in desks, they need room to explore, create, and grow. Redirecting resources toward building a pre-K wing would better position us to meet both immediate and long-term needs, without sacrificing the crucial space needed to foster a dynamic, interactive learning environment. In closing, at times, I feel Spice Wood is overlooked because we are not in town, as we're forgotten. I would like to extend an invitation to all board members and all community members to visit our school, see the engaging learning environment we have built, and witness firsthand the growth of our students. The full magnitude of these challenges is better understood in person. Thank you for your time and attention, and I will always advocate for my students, and I hope that you will too. Please vote for Spice Wood Funds for the bond.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, do we have a, that's all of our citizen comments? Maybe you have a presentation? Okay?
This presentation is a reminder of what has, what is on the proposed bond that we're bringing forward tonight. And so, real quickly, just to remind you, the committee met on six different occasions, looking at the different information, coming up with projects, prioritizing the list, and then working to reach a consensus at that last meeting. It was a, I will tell you, one of the things, just as a side note, we felt like we needed a little bit extra, and that was the sixth meeting, to make sure it was a very collaborative, community-driven process. And I think, I would hope that the members that were on the committee would feel like that extra really brought it home for that. So this is the recommendation. And what I will say is, what I'm about to, out to share is actually a recommendation that has some additions. And so I'm going to explain that as we go, because there's going to be a few people in the room that are like, "I don't remember that." And that's okay, because what my plan was to communicate with the Community Advisory Committee tomorrow, to just let them know, here's some subtle changes. But the projects, renovation of district-wide facilities, technology, safety, security, maintenance, Highland Lake Circular, growth-based elementary expansion, Spice Wood Elementary vehicular circulation, high school CTE, district-wide programmatic enhancements, district, high school dance, this is a new one I'll talk about in a minute, elementary playgrounds, high school multipurpose facility, high school auditorium renovation, new weight room, high school softball, artificial turf, Mustang Stadium turf replacement, district-wide digital marquees, Mustang Stadium scoreboard, energy efficiency, Mustang Gym Locker Room addition, high school auxiliary gym, relocation of high school baseball field with turf, and then high school band hall. All of that equals $172,200,000. And let me give you some specifics, I'm going to go fast. The district-wide renovation, district-wide facilities, we've been calling that deferred maintenance, we want to just refer to it as renovation of district-wide facilities, $65 million. District-wide technology, this includes part $2.2 million that are one-to-one device for students and staff, 2.6 for some of the infrastructure that technology needs to keep it up and running. District-wide safety and security, $2.275 million, working on hardware, looking at some of the entry and some radios. Replacing aging busing and district-wide maintenance vehicles, $5.2 million, 3.8 towards transportation maintenance, 1.4. Highland Lake Elementary School vehicular circulation, trying to build some capacity to get them off of 1,431, $680,000. Growth-based elementary expansion, this is the idea that looking at our enrollment, that we would have a project that would have allocation of $13 million, that would have the potential to add 24,000 square foot addition if needed at any one of our campuses. A Spice Wood Elementary School vehicular circulation, extending the parking lot and the bus ability, and so seven, basically $700,000. High school CTE expansion, this would be adding three classrooms right in that dark purple space, and those classrooms would remove a portable, give a space for additional welding, as well as aerospace engineering lab and classroom, $15 million. District-wide programmatic enhancement and curricular supports, $3 million. High school dance and relocation renovation, this is hard to see, you've seen this before, and I'm going to go into greater detail in a minute, but this would be moving high school cheer and dance into the existing band hall, which would be a dramatic increase of space and all sorts of additional facilities from what they have, $2.6 million. Elementary playgrounds, four playgrounds, including a relocation of the track at Colt Elementary School, $4.6 million. Indoor multipurpose facility, that would be 70 yards, 60 plus the end zone, plus three track lanes, would be $16.5 million, it includes restroom and storage. Renovation of the auditorium, $5 million, that would include seating, lighting, and bathroom upgrades. Weight room, that would be attached to the indoor multipurpose facility, $4.25 million, this would include an allocation for additional weights. Softball, artificial turf, $1.185 million. I'm sure the mayor, if he were still here, would love the idea of not watering the turf, not watering the grass, and so this would be putting artificial turf in our baseball field. The stadium turf will be close to replacement by 2027, and this would be allocating $1 million to replace stadium turf. District-wide digital marquees, $500,000, one per campus. A Mustang Stadium scoreboard, upgrading the current scoreboard to a new digital scoreboard, $800,000. Energy efficiency, looking at things like solar, LED lighting retrofit, building envelope enhancements, $3 million in funds. Max Copeland Gym addition, this was one of the last projects that was added from that committee, and this was adding an additional locker room, boys and girls, at the Max Copeland Gym. New high school auxiliary gym, so this is where I'm going to stop for a minute, because the next couple of projects really go into an area that for the Community Advisory Committee, my plan was to send them an email either later tonight or tomorrow, and just kind of give them a brief update on, here's where things stand. This new auxiliary gym, a later slide will show that we are looking at moving the band hall into the small gym, increasing the square footage of the band hall, and that they would have it connected to the existing dance hall, which could be used as classroom space or as practice space. They would have access to the locker rooms, that would be for band and the band use only, as well as the mezzanine for storage. It would increase the square footage significantly, but this would be losing a gym. And so as we were looking at some prices of various projects, whether a new band hall or anything, this was a unique idea where we would be one of the few indoor facilities that would have a gymnasium, that you could have basketball, volleyball, move straight into the artificial turf, move straight into the weight room, and have all of that in one small area. It's sitting on the existing baseball field. As just a reminder, it did not fit well anywhere else on campus unless you put it way out above the baseball field, somewhere in that area, and that was, when you're dealing with a thunderstorm, lightning, bad weather, inclement weather, trying to get the kids as quick as we can to a facility, we felt like looking at an additional area would be a good idea. So that's 5.3, relocation of high school baseball field with turf, this is 6.53 million, and so to build the multipurpose on the band baseball facility, it would be requiring us to move baseball. And so this would be moving the baseball field behind the stadium, it would be building it with a locker room, a office, bathrooms, concession stands, dugouts, batting cages, and stands, and a press box. It would be turfed, and it would be sitting right where our current retention pond is, and that we would move that retention pond to the northwest of the baseball field. 6.53. And then the band hall relocation, moving it from where it currently resides to the small gym, and expanding it in total square footage, as well as having additional projects that get included within that, $8.3 million. That is the, that is the total, that's a quick little view of all of the projects that add up to $172.2 million. In the second column, it shows you which prop, as we're currently sitting, what prop each one of those would be today. Number two, district-wide technology, that is one that will be in Prop A and B with $2.2 million. Bond capacity, just real quickly, as a couple of reminders, one, our $55 million bond today would be worth 90, it would cost over $90 million. Through our good, through your good stewardship of bond funds, is why we have the ability to have $209 million available with no tax rate increase. And so that's going to be something you hear over and over, is that zero tax increase, that this, if the bond, if all four propositions, if we, if the board were to move forward with this, all four propositions would, if they were to fail, it would be a tax rate of 2153. If all three, all four were to pass, it would be a tax rate of 2153. That 2153 will not change, no matter whether it passes or fails. And so this is the total for each one of the props, Prop A, 31, 435. Prop B, $2.2 million. Prop C, 12, 515. And then Prop D, 26, 550,000. For a total of $172.2 million. I would entertain any questions.
Questions, Board? Motions? Okay, have a motion?
When is that deadline that we need to for the mayoral?
The deadline would be, oh, sorry.
February 14th?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion? Second by Mr. Bergman. Discussion?
Sorry to go out of order, I just wanted to make sure we had enough time to do that.
Go ahead. Did you have something else to add? Other comments, discussion here? I guess my question would be, what is this going to accomplish? We've had six... We've had six community input sessions, we've had three times the board's been together, what more data do we need, what more do we need to discuss?
I just don't feel like we've had enough time to discuss it as the board, and I would like to get the best information that we have on growth at elementary campuses to determine if it's from redistricting, or if it's from new families in the district, like we haven't seen that data.
We haven't seen the data from our numbers at the schools?
But we don't know what if that's new families, or what if that's redistricting.
Do we have the numbers of redistricting?
We do have the numbers at Spice Wood for redistricting, and what I can say is that there are fifty-seven students that are from the redistricting. Thirty-one of those students are located at Horseshoe Bay South and Castle Terrace, twenty, thirteen of those students are at twenty-one forty-seven and two-eighty-one, including Panther Hollow, eight of those students are Gateway Parkway, five of those students are East twenty-one forty-seven and County Road four oh four, for a total of fifty-seven. If we add those fifty-seven to Colt Elementary, which is where they were zoned, and why we moved the zoning was, as a reminder, was trying to alleviate the pressure at Colt, that number would be six-hundred-and-forty-one. Colt's capacity is six-hundred-and-fifty students. One other just side note to give you a little bit of additional data, and I am happy, I would love to make sure that whatever data you want and need, some of this is going to be hard, figuring out what parents have moved into our district versus what parents are, are here, that's going to be a hard number, but, but what I can say is this, if you look at our number in April of twenty-twenty-two, when we were having the discussion of, do we need to shift the boundaries, and we were having that discussion quite a bit, we were at under nineteen-hundred, we were at eighteen-ninety-one of our total current attendance between Colt, Highland Lakes, Marble Falls, and Spice Wood. Today, that number is almost two-thousand, it's nineteen, as of the seventeenth, it is, no, as of the twenty-fourth, it is nineteen-nine-ninety-nine, and so one student away from two-thousand. We have grown by almost a hundred-and-nine students over about a two-and-a-half-year period. The majority of those are at Spice Wood, some of that is definitely from the rezoning, but as a reminder, we rezoned because Colt was about to be at capacity, and if we were to move those students back, we would be at capacity at Colt.
What is our elementary student capacity, district-wide?
Our elementary capacity, district-wide, is twenty-five-hundred. Colt Elementary is six-hundred-and-fifty, Highland Lakes Elementary is seven-fifty, probably closer to eight-hundred if we pushed it, Marble Falls is six-fifty, Spice Wood is at four-fifty. The problem we have is the campus that can take the most kids, there is not a direct route to have our kids without driving by at least one other elementary school. If we were thinking that rezoning was, was an option to try to alleviate pressure at any one of our campuses, we would be potentially driving them by.
You say eight-fifty at Highland Lakes?
Seven-fifty, but probably closer to eight-hundred.
Isn't best practice for an elementary campus in the six-hundred range?
I would be of the preference to not go above about six-hundred, that's my personal preference. I've seen districts, and I'm sure that Stan and Yarda and others have seen districts that have gone all the way up to a thousand kids. There's no magic bullet, it's, it's kind of driven by what our community wants and expects, and so I think most of our, our schools have been around six-hundred, between five to six-hundred, with the exception of Spice Wood. Spice Wood has been, for years and years, the, the very low two-hundreds, and so I definitely understand the, the need for data to make sure that we're making a, an informed decision.
So just to be clear, we could handle five-hundred more elementary kids in our school district today, with the current facilities that we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have another question. How many classroom, elementary classrooms have waivers, size waivers, and this might be a Yarda question?
That's a Yarda question.
I mean, I know my daughters at Marble Falls Elementary have had, almost every one of them has been in a class that had a waiver, sometimes two, three years in a row, just because, like you said, they don't all move in as pre-K kids, we get a pre-Care, we get four fifth graders, you know, it kind of, you never know where the growth is going to, where the surge is going to be.
Absolutely.
The numbers for the future look like, not that I don't remember, but I'd just like to look at them again, unless, you know, evaluate all this and think about it again. I don't know what about a long meeting to discuss, I'm not even saying there's any changes, but I would like for us to at least discuss it, so we know, or I would know, maybe I'm just a slow learner, but I'd like to know a little bit.
One of the, yeah, I'm with you. One of the things I do want to just make crystal clear is that we are our most current demographic report, like if you're looking at a future projection, five, ten years out, we chose, we made a decision to not do one recently, because we spent probably somewhere in the order of fifty to sixty-five thousand dollars on two reports that were extremely, extremely off, and so we made the decision to not, before we started this process, to get a, an additional one, because it's been a waste of money, the last two that we've done, and so I don't, I don't have one that's going to be like, one of the, one of the demographers that, that has it, it's going to be us just looking at our data. Is that, is that what you're wanting?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We talked about it before, we had the numbers before, I just wanted to go back.
You're wanting projected growth numbers?
Yeah. I just wanted to look.
So you want a demographic study? You want us to pay for a demographic study?
No, I do not want us to make another study, I just wanted to look at what we.
Where are we going to find them? Where do you find future projected numbers, other than a demographic study?
We've, well, somebody's projecting the study, somebody's projecting numbers.
All you have is trend data, all we have is what we've seen already. I don't think there's any other numbers to be able to provide.
I, I think I just heard the mayor say what the city limits of Marble Falls is supposed to double by twenty-forty, did I imagine that? Did everybody else hear that? I, I mean, I don't know where they get their numbers.
They had a study, the, the little small print said estimating six percent growth for the next.
The other thing that, the other thing that's been the hardest thing, and this goes back to our twenty-sixteen demographic study, as well as our twenty-twenty-two demographic study, there's a multiplier that they try to do a best guess, as far as what is going to be our growth. We can pull out the, the twenty-twenty-two demographic study, it's actually on the website, we can look at that. It was wrong then, and it will be hard to extrapolate, like, is it going to be, like, could we somehow use that as a, a guidepost to make that decision? I don't know if we can or can't, but, but it's, it's, I can provide that, it's out there.
Well, they made a mistake since nineteen-eighty-two, I know, they projected all kinds of stuff since nineteen-eighty-two, so those numbers have been wrong, you know.
But it's going to help clear it up this time.
You know, I'll just be quiet, that'd be a thing to do.
Sure.
But I just think there's value in having some additional conversation on it in a setting where we're not trying to take care of other business, and I mean, but that number on, that's the number for redistricting, I first heard that tonight, and I think if we could get some data like that sent out, and best guess on how many of it is new families in the district, and just, we're talking a hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars of taxpayer money, and I know we're not raising the tax rate at all, but I just want to make a good, informed decision on it, and have a time to take a look at that, have a time to have some conversations, and I think that's what Coach is saying also, I'm not going to speak for you, sir, but.
I feel like we had a discussion a week ago, that when we left that discussion, we said, if there's additional data that's needed, get it to Dr. Gasaway. I just don't, I, I guess if we're going to do something like this, I would like to know exactly what data is needed, so that we can be very clear with our direction to the administration of what we want to see.
Yarda, are you taking?
For, for me, that's what I would like.
What?
Number for redistricting, best guess on new families.
Other questions, comments?
I'm just saying, I, I feel like I'm ready to move on and be beyond this, but I also value consensus greatly, so if we can schedule something fairly soon, so we can all get this done, I value that consensus for us all. I can give up a couple more hours of family time to get this knocked out. We want to do it right?
I'll be voting against this, just for the record, because I feel like we've beat the dead horse as long as we can, I've got the information, and I'm ready to move forward. Anybody else, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, we didn't all vote. All right. All in favor, Mr. Beauchamp is in favor or opposed? Beauchamp is an aye. Mr. Bergman? Bergman's an aye. McCary's an aye. It's Too Big. Too Big's a no. I'm a no. Mr. Payson? Mr. Verdell?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we'll postpone this for a meeting to be determined.
I will work, we've got to have it done by the fourteenth, and if, if there was any changes in the order or the propositions that we're recommending, then at that point in time, we would, we would need time to be able to work with our legal counsel on revising the order, if, if there was any changes, and so I'll have Ms. Schaefer work with the board to start scheduling something as quickly as possible, this, for it to, I think, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm following the will of the board, this is a two-board meeting, this is one for us to talk about it, and then the, the next one would be a quick one, potentially, to just adopt the order of election, if we get to the point that we're there, correct?
That's what I heard.
The, the, I'm, I'm going to ask a question, and if I, I'm going to make a statement, and if I say this wrong, Justin, then correct me, our, our legal counsel is here from Oryx, but it, we could do it in one night, as long as nothing changes in the order, whether it's the cost or propositions, if, if something were to change in that, we would need to have a, another meeting to have that order corrected, we, we don't want to be trying to draft the order from this group, it, it would be from our legal counsel. Did I say that well? Thank you.
So if something changes, we need two meetings?
Yes, sir.
But we could post it as one?
We could post it as one and not take action, and then have a second one.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's post it that way, and then we'll navigate.
Okay.
We're going to be running short, though, because it's already, so we'll need three days' notice.
Yes, sir.
And in order to get two meetings in, we'll have to have three days' notice between that one and the next one, so we're going to have to get on this quick.
I would be telling you probably to look at the next two Mondays, Monday the third, and that is a student holiday, but that would be a, a great day to have a board meeting, because we don't have basketball, and a couple of you like to go to basketball games, and so Monday the third of February is what I'm going to be asking Ms. Schaefer to start working on as the initial.
All right, let's circle back around to the TAPR report, Dr. Fields. This is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing seven-fifty-one PM.
Good evening, I appreciate your time this evening to announce the release of the taper or Texas Academic Performance Report. And I'll jump right into that. This report is a great source of information, however, it's somewhat, it can be somewhat dated, so I enjoy looking at it when people have questions about things, it's a quick way to find different sources of information all in one report, and it's online, which is nice. There's eight sections to the report, most of it deals with our academic performance or STAR, but there are other tests mixed in, there's PEMS financial information, which is nice to be able to compare our district and our campuses to the state, our accreditation status, our overall campus performance objectives, and there's a report on violent or criminal on our campuses, and then our student performance in post-secondary institutions, as well as our board-adopted HB-three goals, and there's a glossary at the end. It's located at our district website, it will be in print in some places around the district, it's, looks like this in print. So I'm going to quickly go through the different sections, what's included in those, but know that it's published as a PDF, but there is an interactive version on the TA website, where you can get a little more information than what's available in the PDF. Oh, I didn't mean to include the little transition, sorry. As of, something to note, normally this report would contain our district rating, however, because of a court case, we do not have a district rating, that should be updated in February, and the report will be updated at that time. Oh, gosh, they're all there. This is an example of what that STAR information looks like, it would contain information about our students at the different performance levels on STAR, and it would also show us last year's comparison, as well as state and region data. Also, some information about growth, so this is a new part of the report, and we are now rated in our accountability ratings on student growth, and that information is included, also at the state and region. Lots of great information about our bilingual education program, same information, but broken down by our students that are served by that, that program. And attendance, graduation, dropout rates, and then a profile of our graduates, so the different ethnicities that make up our graduates, the graduation type, and what programs those students are involved in. College career and military readiness is included, and I wanted to show a little blurb about that, our CCMR has increased over the last year, so that's something we can certainly be proud of, but I would also like to say it's notable that it's higher than the region and the state, and that's something else to be really proud of, and I wanted to include two of the statistics that add into that are on-ramps, which is a new program for us at the high school, has increased greatly over the last year, and then also our IBC rate. Keep in mind that the CCMR is a year behind, because it takes some time for PEMS to gather that data and send it to TA. Also included is student and staff information and program information. Included in the staff information for future years will be very exciting for us, there's information about our teachers that earn a designation through the TIA program, and that's something that we're going to be doing, and so we'll be able to compare ourselves to the state in that way. Financial information about each campus, and our accreditation status, because we don't have a rating, we also don't have an accreditation status, but we are considered accredited based on twenty-two, twenty-three. Our campus performance objectives, what you'll find in the report is a link to our website, which would take you to our campus improvement plans, and then our report on violent and criminal, and post-secondary. At the October board meeting, you heard all about our HB-three goals, but that information is included in the report, and then there's a glossary at the end, if there were to be something that you wanted to have a question about, you could look it up in the glossary. Okay, so it's on the district website, it's in print a couple of places, and then it's also on the TA website in an interactive version, if you have any questions about the report, I'm happy to talk about any of it, and that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is public hearing, anybody from public? Questions, comments? No? All right, we will close the public hearing at seven-fifty-six. Okay, we've got, consider possible approval of action, we're We're back down on 11A. We've got a consent agenda for order of election for the May 3rd. Board of Trustees, tax penalty waiver, minutes from the December 16th meeting, the January 13th meeting, and the January 23rd meeting. Anything you need to talk about on those?
Only that the order of election for May 3rd is a normal process that we'd go through every single time we're having an election. So hence why it's on consent.
Questions, comments? Consent agenda, motion for the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Boshiers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Upcoming meetings, board training opportunities. We've got a February 24th regular meeting, a March 24th regular meeting, and we'll be scheduling something in the next week or so. Talk about bond stuff, executive session. As we get to discussion of professional personnel, we'll stand adjourned into executive session under Texas Government Code 551.074 at 7:57 PM. Okay, we're back into open session at 8:20 and we also, any actions coming before the